Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen meeting on April 23rd. We'll go through the agenda briefly. At seven o'clock, we'll have citizens input. And at 7:05, we'll have chairman's update. At 7:10, there's one remaining article that we're going to vote on in the annual town meeting warrant article package. At 7:20, we are going to continue the review of our town manager, Kevin Pecos. We started it last week and we're finishing it this week. And then on 7:30, we're going to enter into executive session for two reasons. First is to negotiate with non-union personnel, and the second one is to review the executive session minutes that we have on file. So Ginny, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Is there anybody here under citizens input? Why don't you go? Yeah, and then we'll go with Jack.
Last night was the first night of the-
Roger, if you could just introduce yourself.
I'm Roger Hill, DPW director. Last night was the first night of our flushing program that we announced last week. The area we covered last night was from, was east-west from Chestnut Street to Moore Street, and north-south from the old camp on Oak Street to the Bleachery on Moore Street. We were very successful in obtaining good data for development of the hydraulic water system model and in cleaning the pipes. The water system recovered more quickly than we expected, and we had only five or six brown water calls today. And they were located close to the middle of the area, which isn't surprising because, you know, when you do an area, the middle usually is the hardest one to get out. The quick cleanup is the result of the new sequesterant we are adding at most of the active wells, and the clean water being added to the system from the Witch Pond filtration plant. The program continues tonight on Oak Street, all the way from Mechanic Street to Cocasset Street, and that's the only street they're going to do tonight. Please note that the flushing program will continue until the entire 115 miles of the system are cleaned. It is expected to last several weeks. The latest information on where and when flushing will occur is available on the town website or by calling the Water Department office. And we will update the map on the website periodically each week to show the area that's going to be done the next week. This whole week will be spent in this same area that we did last night. We're just going to clean up the pockets and try to take care of the brown water problems.
Very good. Thank you, Roger. Jack, welcome to come to the table of the mic.
Jack Ortholet, town historian. I appreciate the courtesy. Thank you. The first is a request for use of the common. 2013 marks the 250th anniversary of the people living here in what would become Foxborough first drawing together to build their meeting house so that they could petition to become a town. They had all pushed to the very, very outer reaches of the towns they actually belonged to, Rentham Wall, Paul Stoughton, and Stoughton Ham, much more in common as friends and neighbors than residents of these distant places. So they had the notion to want to become a town, and the law was very, very clear. You had to have a meeting house, had to have a minister, and we don't get to celebrate 250th anniversaries very often, but I thought that it would be just a great opportunity to draw together as a community again on the common. So that's there. My, I am concerned-
So this is June 7th?
Oh, I'm sorry, June 7th, which is the Friday night of Founder's Day, yes. And I would envision a program very similar to the POW MIA where you would have speakers, serenading seniors, a couple of little side lights, and, you know, people would bring their own chairs and be very informal on the common.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions on that?
Sounds great.
Excellent.
I, I am concerned about some of the things that we were hoping to get done on the common. If they're going to be done before Founder's Day, we only have seven weeks. And hopefully, we can get those broken sections of fence repaired and things like that. Also, we, you know, hopefully, we get that memorial tree replanted for Mrs. Bristol that had been on the traffic island out in front of Memorial Hall. So if the Tree and Park people do a fabulous job on the common, I mean, they should be commended for the care that they give it. But we just got those mechanical things that just got to be taken care of.
Now, you, this isn't the first time. You sent a letter. It was in our packet a month or two, three weeks ago.
Right.
And you itemized, you talked about, it was fence repair, that tree that was taken out but not put back.
Right.
Was there other stuff on that?
Well, of course, the new damage, which has been repaired, one of the plows hit at the entranceway across from Abashance, knocked out the granite post in the section. That's been done. But, but the other stuff, the sections that are broken, there's three broken sections there, and the tree, things like that.
Okay. Is that, is that the letter that you had sent last time?
Uh, yeah, actually, yeah.
Well, Kevin's here, and I actually could have probably grabbed Roger while he was here.
Because what I had done was, I photographed the broken sections with a landmark in the background, so they're recently identified. And that memorial tree, the light of Bristol, that had been on the traffic island somehow in the downtown revitalization project, it got torn down, it had cut down, and nothing ever done about a replacement. So when I did talk to Roger about it, he strongly recommended a flowering tulip for that particular location, and as it turned out, that would, that was Mrs. Bristol's favorite type of tree. So I was pretty thrilled by that. But, but it's really time that hopefully, we can get moving on that. But then, while I'm here, because it originated with the selectmen, I should give them another later board the courtesy of dealing with it. Back in 1971 and '72, we were heavily, heavily engaged in the Save the Common Fence program in town. And when we finally finished and had a rededication of the common, the selectmen surprised us with Dick LeGan and myself with a plaque that were commemorating the effort for that. At the time, there was only one memorial on the common, so they put that plaque on the wing of the WWII tablet. I'd be a lot more comfortable if you'd give me your blessing to take it off, put it on a separate rock, and just put it over in the, and the shrubs here somewhere doesn't belong on the WWII tablet.
Humble.
All righty.
Before you go, Kevin, so what are you saying? We've got a, the 250th coming up on June 7th, which is four, five weeks away, five weeks away, six weeks away. Could you check with Roger to make sure that, and then, not to say we have to assign somebody, but can Mark, can you follow that?
Yeah, I'm already writing it down.
Because I just don't want to get stressed out three, four, five weeks and trying to figure out stuff the week before, that you only have the 250th once.
Well, the celebration's going to come-
One way or the other. Nice to have it done without the-
It would be nice to have those things taken care of.
Okay.
All righty.
So you can follow up on that as well.
I thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jack. One last question. Jack, the same rules that applied, if we get a meeting house and a minister, we can start our own town? Is that still, is that applying? That's gone now.
I think we should try that.
Just a small area.
It's funny, because there was a movement just late 1800s into the early 1900s, the people in the south, east Foxborough were kind of bent out of shape. They didn't think their proportionate share of the taxes were coming back into east Foxborough. They were being spent up here in the center, and they actually wanted to break away from Foxborough and become a town named Sundar. Sundar. And fortunately, the legislature turned them down, and we all, everybody made up. And one of the big issues was they had outgrown the schools, so they got the new Pratt School out of that. So it felt good for everybody.
Perfect.
In hindsight, we wish they had broken away, though.
Oh, I'm not going there.
Those people. All right. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Under chairman's update, very brief, the last, last time we met, it was on a Tuesday. It was the day after the bombings at the, at the marathon. And a week later, I think we probably still have the same sorrow and anger and angst about it, but a week later, I just wanted to reach out and give thanks to the several Foxborough police officers that had gone over there on special forces to address it. And I was amazed at how many Foxborough residents who are police officers in different towns also went over there that you live next to, as well as the neighbors and the businesses and even the churches kind of all coming together as soon, as recently as yesterday, just as the one week passed for the moment of silence. So it's just, Foxborough was very lucky we weren't hit like some of the other towns that had people that had died. But, I mean, as a community, we certainly took a step back, and we're not as insulated as we thought. So a lot went on the week, but I just wanted to say thanks for all the people that stepped up and all the community support. And I think, Kevin, you were involved in that as well. You got reactivated, if you want to call it.
Yeah, for a brief time. I actually had written a letter. I didn't know anyone would bring this up.
Oh, sure.
But it's a wonderful segue for the three officers from Foxborough of RPD who were direct participants. And when I say direct, I mean, they were right in the heart of what was going on. Copies for the board.
Do you want to take a minute to read it? Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. It's a letter addressed to Officer James Payne, Officer Scott Hodson, and Operations Lieutenant John Hannan. Now, all three of these individuals participate in regional special weapons and tactics teams, or in the case of John, a regional intelligence analysis team. And in their capacities, they were all called in immediately. In fact, I know they were all in there Monday night, and they stayed in for quite a while during the week. So I offered this letter to them. Dear Officer- Let me just shut that door. Dear Officer, please accept this letter of commendation for your participation in the pursuit and eventual capture of the perpetrators, perpetrators of the recent act of terrorism at the Boston Marathon. Because of your actions and that of your brothers and sisters in law enforcement, two terrorists are no longer a threat to our community. Everyday police officers face mortal danger in completing their work. This simple fact goes largely unheralded and is poorly understood by the very citizens of the community that you protect. Recent terrorist events showcase the grave danger which is an integral part of the work of your profession. Through the prism of media coverage, we have been able to see that work and reach a new understanding of the dangers you face. We join with you in mourning the death of your brother Sean Collier, and we pray for the speedy recovery of Dick Donahue. To say that we admire you deeply would be an understatement of epic proportion. To say that we understand how you face such danger daily as that which we witnessed, and that you do so with calm demeanor and professionalism would be for us a lie. We are humbled by your example, and we are hugely grateful, but we must admit that we cannot understand. But this we do know. It has been said, that greater love hath no man than that he or she would lay down their life for others. You express that love and the courage that fuels it every day. And for that, you have the admiration and love of a grateful community in return. With the deepest respect, Kevin Pecos, town manager, and that was offered on behalf of the whole board to those three outstanding offices. And I will tell you, they were, the two SWAT officers and Lieutenant Hannan were right, I mean, really about as in the thick of things as you could possibly be, and all performed in an exemplary manner, made themselves proud, and made the community of Foxborough very proud. They wore their patches very proudly on their shoulders and were all very proudly displayed. And of course, they all did great work.
Very fitting, and coming from someone that has been through similar situations. It came from a nice place, so. Any comments on the, on the letter of, call it a letter of recommendation, a letter of thanks?
It's very forthcoming. It justifies the done. It is very concerning for all our enforcement. It's amazing what public safety personnel go through. I can't compare it to anything I've ever had to go through, and I really, I think the whole board, especially our hearts, go out to the families that suffered. And for the officers in Watertown, this is, you know, regular guys like our guys that had to respond to that, and some have never even pulled a weapon out of their holster and have to do what they did, and do it successfully, is just, you know, to the training that these officers get, and what the towns, you know, probably don't know, that we, we support our law enforcement officers with all kinds of training, and when it came to be needed, it worked. So I'm really proud of this community and all the other communities involved.
I think we also need to be very thankful to their families, these officers' families, for what they had to endure as they worried for their family members. So I think that was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two dates coming up, May 13th, there's some confusion and discussion back and forth, when's election and when's town meeting? May 13th is, it's a Monday. It's always been a Monday. It's staying on a Monday. And that, for those people at home, that's something that this board works very hard, at least once, sometimes twice a year, to get warrants to the town meeting to vote. So I think collectively, we can say, take the time to go out on May 13th. Raise your hand. It's easy to criticize and play second, you know, second guess, but our government and our town is run with simple warrant articles, and they're all important. So May 13th, take the time to go to the town meeting. Every department head has gone through this board, as well as the advisory committee, and this is, it's an important day. Election is May, sorry, April 30th, which is on a Tuesday, and if you remember, we had to move that to coincide with the state. Linda and I are running, and John Gray's here, as well as many, there's four school committee members for a couple seats. There's a couple, there's one school committee person running unopposed, and there's this planning board and water and sewer. And I could probably say, we don't mind doing what we're doing. We're not complaining, but we're asking you to just to come out and vote. It's a simple thing. It's open all day. And in light of what happened last week, you know, just don't take it for liberty that, for granted, because that's how towns function. We're not appointed by a mayor. We're elected, and so just take the time to come out on both days. That's all we're asking. Right before the meeting, Mark had asked me, and I don't know if it's tradition, or he said he did it a couple of years ago, but where the board is changing, or the vote is coming, however you want to say it, what did you suggest if everyone wanted to?
If anybody wanted to weigh in for a minute and reflect on the year with this board, or what they look forward to in the future, it's pretty much, I did it when I was chairman. I let everybody just say one minute's worth of thing, and, you know, I'll go first. I'll say, you know, it's been a pleasure working with this board. It's one of the finest boards I've ever worked with. I think Jim's done an outstanding job as our chairman. I've had six different chairmen, and he stood out, and he stood strong, and very well, you speak very well, you treat everybody on this board very fairly, you let everybody have their speak, time to speak, and it's, it's been a pleasure working with this board, especially with the leadership of our chairman. And I look forward to working with everybody again, and whoever comes about. And we all do it for the right reasons, I think, so. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Just, I'm in an uncomfortable situation right now, and I'll say, this, this wasn't a Jim thing, but I can say equally the same thing about Linda. And it's, it's been a nice three years working with this current board. And I didn't start this to talk about patting on the back, but it's, feel odd, I didn't know what this, this was going to go in this direction, but I'll pass on that, so.
I mean, everybody. I just mean, everybody on the board, it's been a pleasure. I mean, you've just done an outstanding job as a chairman, and I want to recognize that.
I agree. I think you've done a great job. I really, the idea of the chairman's update has been a great addition for everybody, and really helpful and informative, and, you know, I think it's been a good year. We got a lot done, and I've also enjoyed working with this board. I dare anybody to say anything differently.
Okay.
No.
No. This was my first year, and I really, truly have enjoyed working with everybody. I'll tell you, this town is very lucky. You have very dedicated people, and they're very generous with their knowledge. They're welcoming. They, they taught me a lot this first year, and I really appreciate it. And I really do think that this is an exceptional board. I've been in town for a long time. I've seen boards come and go, but these guys are really good to work with, and they really are doing things, like you said, for the right reasons. So thank you, everyone, for helping me this year.
Well, I, I'll chime in. Jim, it's been great working with you, and I do, I think that this board is, it's been okay working with you. Let's put it that way.
This was not what it is.
Sorry. No, actually, I think this board, I've worked with six just like you, and, you know, we had some things to overcome, and I think that we did, and we worked out well this, this time. Things could have gone really bad really quickly after the episodes of last year, but they didn't. And I think it's because of the commitment that we each have to the town. And at the end of the day, that's all it's about, is the town. So, and whatever the voters do on next Tuesday, it will be for the best for the town, so.
Can I just throw one more thing out there?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Kevin for your tolerance of five individuals, and, you know, all the information that you've provided and helped us be able to work well on projects together, and all of your employees, their work is very much appreciated, too, because without them, you know, we can't really put things together, so we, I appreciate that a lot.
Thanks for saying. You guys, one thing, you know, we don't always agree on everything up here, but one thing I'll tell the public, each one of you works on behalf of the citizens of this community, and your heart is absolutely, positively on the side of what's good for this community as you see it. That is absolutely for sure. Kudos to you. Whatever happens, and whoever I'm working for next week, I wish you all the best, that's for sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Go into, at 7:10, we're a few minutes late, but going into the annual town warrant. Now, we closed this a while ago. We voted on the final warrants last meeting. There was one warrant article that Ginny abstained from because she wanted to get more information. She subsequently went to the advisory committee, vetted it out through their process. It was the housing trust, and got a lot of the questions answered, so she had asked if we could-
Town council sent an opinion as well. It was requested, that I think you all saw.
So Ginny had asked if we could reconsider one of the warrant, that warrant article. I'm trying to find the number.
Which number, which number is that, do you know?
Twenty.
Twenty. So I moved to reconsider Article 20.
Second.
And just so that people, what Article 20 is, is to see if the town hall will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law 44, Section 55, establishing a municipal affordable housing trust for a period of time to expire on July 1st, 2016, or take any actions. And that was sponsored by the planning board. And I think the question you had was, can we put a sunset clause on there over blanking, blanketting over a state statute?
Right. And town council's opinion was that it was legal as written, and that was my concern, so.
So we made a motion just to open it.
Motion was made.
Just to open, to reconsider it, not to vote on it, so we need to-
Okay. Any more discussion on opening it, reopening it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now, is there a motion on Article 20? Any affirmative?
So moved.
Motion is to approve.
Motion to approve, yeah.
Article 20 by Lorraine, seconded.
Second.
By Ginny. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And thanks to the planning board for bringing that forward. So-
And thank you for the opportunity to re-vote on that.
So Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, all the warrant articles have been voted. They're all in order. They're all in printing?
Yep. And the AdCom, I think, is considering the last one tomorrow night, representing, I'll be presenting the police memorandum of agreement. Hope whatever, however many of you can get there, can get there. I've written a PowerPoint presentation that goes through the whole, you know, why we did what we did, the survey, the wage comparison, all that work that we did that led up to the final memorandum of agreement. I'll present that to the advisory committee tomorrow night, give them copies of the memorandum of agreement. I'll be followed by some comments from the chief, from the president of the union. Randy, of course, has done his usual excellent work in costing it all out, and he'll present a spreadsheet to go through that. And then, once we've given that presentation, answer questions and whatnot. It is a substantial step we've taken, so some support from the board would be appreciated. I know if Mark can make it, he's been there right along the entire process, so he can comment from his perspective. And hopefully, we'll come out of that tomorrow night with all parties agreeing it's a good move forward for the town.
Question for clarity, James. I do plan on going tomorrow night. I know we haven't posted a meeting. If more than two of us show up, is that any?
You are allowed, all five of you, to show up at someone else's posted meeting and to comment as a participant in the meeting. The only thing you can't do is deliberate together, like you couldn't go off in a corner and have a chat about something that was there, and then come out and report, you know, what you talked about. But the five of you can make your own comments to the meeting perfectly legally.
Okay. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, we can go right into, we're still ahead of it, behind a little bit, so Selectmen's Annual Review of the Town Manager's Salary Review, Review of the Town Manager and the Salary Review. And if you recall, last week, probably two or three weeks ago, it's, the process started where Kevin had presented us his self-evaluation, the highlights of the year. Last week, we went through the spreadsheets and did our own evaluation, and we stopped there. The last part was the salary review, and this is all hand-in-hand with what's in his contract. So I'll open it up for discussions with the board.
Once again, James, for clarity, maybe I was misunderstood last week when I brought up that we were going to, I asked for this meeting to you in open session, so, you know, we're not going to get this all done tonight because it was getting late. Everybody's tired, so we only have one more meeting just to clean up the executive session minute thing and the other negotiations with non-union personnel. I didn't expect and wasn't really prepared to discuss with us tonight, but it's up to the board if you want to continue the conversation. I mean, I can jump in, but I didn't expect to see so many things. I kind of requested just that, because we couldn't have a meeting for three weeks, because we had a meeting on the same day as the election, and we're going to have a meeting the following week, so we would have missed three weeks. I just wanted to clean up last year's work. I wasn't ready to step into next year's work at that time. So I just didn't know how the rest of the board felt about that.
Maybe, maybe I missed it. Did you guys have that same understanding? No?
No. I thought we were going to talk about the salary tonight. I wasn't sure if it was going to be an executive or open, but, you know, assuming Kevin's comfortable with open, we're open.
That part we did talk about. We could go either way. You said you'd-
Either way, whatever the board liked to do, fine with me.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, if Mike feels, you know, that you would rather put it off, I mean, I have no problem putting it off.
Here's your problem. There's, there's two problems. Number one is, there is no way to know with an election if all board members will be returning or not, so it puts someone in the position of having to vote on compensation, which is a follow-up to the review. You know, the five of you have done the review because you know what my performance has been last year, and the five of you should decide if this pay increase merited or not. Now, if you don't do it tonight, then you won't be able to do it before the election occurs. If all five of the board members are back, well, fine, no problem. But if that were not to be the case, then that is going to put a new board member in an extraordinarily difficult position, and I think, Ginny, you were put in that position last year. And I think the whole point of the way my contract is written is to prevent that from happening so that it, the review and the salary discussion occurs before the election. Second point is, I think you only have one more meeting depending before the town meeting. And if there is, if the board decides- And if there is, if the board decides no increase is merited, well, that's fine. The budget's all set. But if you do decide that something is merited, then that's got to get budgeted, because my budget is way too thin, you know, to absorb anything. We either have to put it in there or we'd have to put it in Article 6. I'm not sure which. I'd have to ask Randy. But that's the other reason. You've got to decide, you know, in a timely manner. So, I would encourage the board to take, to make the decision tonight, because it's just for those two reasons.
Would the board consider discussing this in executive session?
We didn't post it.
We have non-union personnel posted, so we could...
Well, you know, if we're going to do it, we did it last year in the open. Why wouldn't we do it this year in the open? I mean, I'll do whatever the board requests. I just... It doesn't much matter to me. I just wish I had time. I would have given it more thought myself, you know. So, I'll do whatever the board wants. But I would not think we would do it in executive session, because last year we did it in open session. I don't think we want to reverse that process.
Okay. I agree with that. One thing, Kevin, that you had said, and I talked about this last week too. If you look at your contract, there's a May 1st date, and that's when we had to have your town manager evaluation done.
Right.
So, that was, so we wouldn't bring a new board member in and put them at the disadvantage like happened last year. So, we specifically changed that. The salary review says July 1st.
Right. It's not required to be done prior to the election. It's just practically speaking, the salary decision follows the review.
I understand that, but we, I think both of these were after May 1st. We intentionally brought the review to May 1st so a current board can evaluate you. And I used this example last week where, like, for instance, where we're looking at a salary increase for our fire chief or an adjustment on a five-year contract. Members weren't necessarily on that five-year duration, but yet we're evaluating them. And I think there is a benefit sometimes to looking at a salary review without the baggage, good or bad. And I shouldn't say baggage, but without the influence of having worked with that person for the year. Because you can look at the reviews and look at it from a different perspective, not having that personal intimate knowledge. So, I'm not opposed to doing a review after May 1st, but I certainly was opposed to doing a review after May 1st. So, I think we just...
After June 1st, you mean?
No, May 1st.
Oh, the review?
The review. So, the review hap... I wanted it, and that's why we had it in the contract, because it got changed. So, the current board looks at it and gives them the review, but a new board can give a person a salary based on looking at the review and in context with everything else.
And there's always going to be a changing of the guard, possibly or not possibly. I mean, some people don't rerun. But I think the other candidate that's here tonight is very, I would say, abreast of what's going on. I think he's been at every meeting. I've noticed him in the crowd, so I would think he's pretty much up to date on the review process and all of our comments.
So, how does the... And I apologize if I put this on the agenda and it wasn't clear at the last, but we've got Mark saying he's wanted some extra time to think about it.
I mean, if Mark's not comfortable, you know, I think we all need to be on the same page. And if he's not comfortable, then, you know, I think you folks should wait, because if he's not comfortable, he hasn't, you know, come to a...
I mean, especially with last week, not much of us had much time, never mind with what went on with our own world, to give anything much thought, you know. I mean, it was a tough week.
So, if we look at the schedule, and Lorraine was just asking me about the potential of a meeting on May 7th, because we've got a bunch of license applications that can't wait till the 14th, which is the day after the town elect, town meeting.
You want to meet on the 7th and the 21st?
Actually, that might be better. That way, we're not doing back... Do we have a meeting on the 20th? Either way, we're going to go back to back.
You wouldn't meet on the 14th, but that'd be the night after town meeting. So, in case anything happens, I would request you consider having a meeting on the 7th, just in case there's anything to consider.
For the warrants, yeah, okay.
For the warrant. And then, you meet the night of the 13th. Anyway, we post that. Usually, there's nothing to do, so you don't actually end up meeting, but we post an hour or a half hour meeting before a town meeting. And then, you'd meet on the 21st.
And take the break on the 14th. Yeah, okay.
Well, you don't typically meet on the 14th, and I wouldn't encourage it, not that I don't love meetings, but...
I think we do have a meeting scheduled for the 14th.
I think we'll probably be all meetinged out by the time.
All right. So, why don't we go to the... Actually, that works out better with respect to the... So, we're meeting the 7th, the 13th, and the 21st. Is that okay with everybody? Sorry, Kevin, to put you off.
No, no, that's okay. I actually, I've got some military stuff coming up in May and June, and I'm trying to... They're being very flexible with me in May, because we're just in Rhode Island, so I'm able to get back here pretty easily. And they were very nice and said, sure, you want to come back for meetings? You need to come back for stuff during the day. That's great. First two weeks of June, I've got to go to Mississippi, and I obviously won't be getting back from Mississippi. But the 7th and the 21st and the 13th, I'll be here all those nights, and that works out perfectly.
You're going to miss Founder's Day?
Huh? Yeah, I am. I'm going to be in Mississippi. I'm going to experience Founder's Day in Mississippi, I guess, or whatever. But, sorry, folks. I won't be in the dunk tank this year.
Okay. So, all right, we'll just go right into action items. We've got in your packet, minutes from April 2nd. Dan, I had a couple quick on this third page. One, two, three, four. Says, Mr. DeVella summarized the questions of the board. That's when all the speakers came up under the TIF. And I think I summarized the questions of the speakers. Those weren't of the boards. And this was more of a question, if you guys can answer, if Kevin's not here right now. On the second-to-last paragraph, the last sentence is, oh, this is regarding the TIF in Vences. "Over the 15-year period, the town will collect $1 billion in taxes revenue." Talking about the TIF. Did you say $1 billion in tax revenue? Tax or taxes and related income, like meals tax and hotel?
Well, I didn't say tax revenue. I said gross revenue, revenue from all sources.
All sources. Okay.
Sixty-eight, yeah, right.
So, can we say... What's that?
It's like 15 years times 68 million, so it's, yeah, it's right around there. It goes up every year, right?
Right. It goes up every year and it compounds, so.
Oh, oh, I was reading that you were saying that we're going to get this from Inventus. That's why this didn't make sense.
I wish we were.
It should be almost read, "Over the next 15 years' period, the town will levy almost $15 billion in taxes." That would be better.
A billion and, over a billion in taxes.
Okay.
A billion in gross revenues, put it that way.
Okay. I thought you were attributing that to the... On page 6, under Town Manager's Performance Review, it says, "Mr. Pecos presented the board with his goals and objectives." That, I think what happened was Mr. Pecos presented the board with his performance highlights. That was the title of it, "For the Past Year," and cross off notes and just write verbally, because we got that. And then, it say, "A written narrative will be sent to the board members also." And then, two paragraphs down from that, it says, "Mr. Pecos stated that a few of the goals are accomplishments." I think it's, "Mr. Pecos stated that a few of the accomplishments are accomplishments with others and just not him."
Accomplishments twice?
Yeah. I think he was saying, those weren't the goals by everybody. Those were his accomplishments. And he was saying they're accomplishments of his staff as well.
I move to accept the minutes of April 2nd.
Second.
As amended.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We have a request for a one-day beer and wine license for HPHR Second Annual Kidney Run to be held on May 11th at the America's Best Value Inn at 105 Washington Street. And that's by Carl Arpino Hyde Park Harley Riders. I had a question on this. Kevin, when someone applies for a license and they say the hours, the exact times of the license are 5:30 to 9:30? And I just looked through their advertisement in the Facebook. They say they're open from 1:30 to 1:00 a.m.
Liquor license?
Yep.
Liquor license by law, once you grant them a liquor license to certain hours that they're allowed to be open by law. And then, to certain hours that the licensing authority can establish by your decision. Your policy says that you grant licenses to 1:00 a.m., last drink, 1:30, all drinks off the table. I'm sorry, 12:30, all drinks off the table, 12:45. So, if they're advertising 1:00 a.m., they're within the guidelines of your regulation, except that they, you haven't voted that if it's a new license. I mean, are we talking about an existing license?
It's a, this is a second annual, but on their license application, it says, "Exact time of license from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m."
That would be unusual, but...
Probably what they requested.
If that's what they want, you can do it.
They probably don't want it going past that.
Okay.
They don't want the live body, so.
Oh, Fusion, yeah. I don't think they stay open after that, but...
Is this an outdoor function? Because it says, where are you storing your inventory? And it says, outdoor refrigeration at Fusion? So, are they doing it like in the... So, are they doing the party in the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah. And we didn't have any issues with it before.
This is a one-day beer and wine, so they're telling you they want 5:30 to 9:30, and they're going to stop festivities at 9:30.
Motion to approve. Request for one-day beer and license for HPHR Second Annual Kidney Run to be held May 11, 2013 at the American Best Value Inn Angus Corp. at 105 Washington Street.
Second.
And under further discussion, and believe me, they had no problems last year. I'm not bringing this up. But they also say, "Has a Sunday entertainment license been applied for?" And the answer is no, but they're advertising for live bands. I'd just hate to approve this and then have them...
They can advertise whatever they like, but...
No, but I think they're going to have it, but they haven't asked for it on this.
Doing it at their own risk.
Says it's Saturday, May 11th.
I would hope they would have the good judgment.
Ah, got you, okay.
Oh, okay, so.
That's why. Yeah, okay. On a Sunday, a special day. All right.
Good discussion.
My only question was that, you know, usually the chief has something on here, but I don't see anything on here from the chief.
If you want to approve it, subject to his approval, that's fine. Yeah, it could be, he didn't see it for some reason.
That's what I said, subject to the police chief.
Oh, you said that? I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I heard you say that. I'm just far away.
Yeah, it's possible that he didn't see it, so I would do that as a precaution.
Because I know, like...
But don't they usually have the signature block on here from the chief? And it's not even on this one?
Yeah, so it's a little, because this is like page... Usually, we see it on here. And I know that there was one year that we had some complaints from Ron Young next door.
We made a condition that he would go and knock on his door and...
Exactly. Yeah, so...
Yeah. And make it contingent on the chief's approval. Make sure he does that.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Pool table license renewals. We have Ancient Mariner, two coin-operated tables. Fusion Five, two coin-operated tables. VFW, three coin-operated tables. And Waxie O'Connor's, one coin-operated table.
Not so out of the ordinary, right? Annual for them.
Yeah. It's just, so these would expire on May 1st, 2014, correct?
Yes. Annual.
Yep. So, I move to approve the pool table licenses for renewals for one year, for two at the Ancient Mariner, two at the Fusion Five, three at the VFW, and one at Waxie O'Connor's.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Second, made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The, we have a request to accept the resignation of Kenneth Bryant from the commission. It's a letter from Chris... I'm sorry, the historical, Foxborough Historical Commission, letter authored by Kristen Hovey.
I move to accept the resignation of Ken Bryant from the commission.
Motion made.
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And I move to approve the appointment of Jennifer Fiskus as a full member, with a term expiring May 2014.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. And Debbie Giadino, the rec director, requests appointment of James Green as a full member of the Board of Recreation to a one-year term, expiring May 1st, 2014.
Move that we accept the request for the appointment of James Green to the Board of Recreation for a one-year term, expiring May 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And Item 6 is a doozy. It's a committee appointment renewals. Now, what you have in your packet, there's five pages and there's probably about 100 pointee renewals. And this represents, I've said it many times, the volunteerism that we have in town is incredible. Our policy over the last few years have changed a little bit, but what we're saying is, if you've gone through this list and there's somebody that sticks out, or you don't think they're equipped for it, or you have an issue, we'll pull that person out and vote on it separately, or maybe have them come in for an interview. If you've gone through the list and it's full of gratitude that these people are volunteering and you have no need for an interview and there's no conflict, then we can make one vote for all of them. And that's, we've got about 100 of them to sign tonight, so. Discussion with the board?
I saw nothing that stood out, as far as somebody I didn't think wanted to participate, you?
So, I move that we approve all the town committee appointment renewals that are effective May 1st, 2013 to 2014, as given to us on our packets for this week.
Second.
Under discussion, these, some of these are more than one year. Some of these are a three-year term. Going to 16, like for the cable access, that's 16.
Oh, there are.
ZBA is 16.
So, the renewals that take effect, May 1st, 2013.
If you want to make it as printed on here, we'll just attach this to the minutes. And then, you're all set. It's recorded.
Yeah, as given us, that's what I had said. As presented to us tonight.
Okay, motion made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine. Further discussion? With gratitude, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. There's an information packet with two items. There's a letter in here. It's addressed to the Selectmen. It's from the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen. And it kind of caught my attention. It basically says, "With respect to the Southeastern Regional Vocational Technical School, Kevin, they came in front of us, and there's a provision in the state law that said, if some of the communities can't afford it," and I'm using my own words, "then some of the other communities step up and pay their share." So, the Board of Selectmen in Bridgewater, is basi... in West Bridgewater, is basically saying to Norton East and Mansfield, Foxborough and Sharon, "We've been paying higher assessments in order to compensate for the lower assessments for other communities. And can we join them and go to the state and basically say," and this is a quote from them, "It is time that the state provide us with the promised funds so that we conduct town business with accurate and deserved local aid figures." And I wouldn't mind drafting a letter to support that if we're, if one town is paying more for the other. I'm not saying if the other town can't pay their share, but the state needs to step in rather than the other towns, because it's coming out of our budget. And that's the way I'm reading this.
It's a change in the formula. Is this regional... It's a change in the, in the formula. This, this regional school formula's been an issue for years and years and years. I served on a couple of task forces at state level to try to fix it. When they passed chapter seventy for local schools, they kinda added the regional schools at the last minute, and the formula was a disaster, and they've never been able to change it. Because if they change it, somebody pays more, somebody pays less, and they never wanted to do it. This is kind of a different way to get at the same issue that ends up sticking the state with more and none of the towns with more. The governor is on board with it. I don't see any harm in going forward. I would want Randy to take a look at this just to be sure that there wasn't any issue, but, you know, I don't, with that condition, I would offer the thought to the board that you might wanna do, pass a motion, but with the condition that Randy take a look at it, be sure there's no hidden traps here for us.
Should we make it an agenda item, James?
You know, I, I don't know if we've, need to, it seems-
There's no rush on this, but if you make it a condition, here's what I'll do. I'll have Randy look at it. If we find that there's no problem, then you're done. Just let it go. If, on the other hand, you know, Randy tells me that there's something here you need to know about that I don't know about-
And put it on an item.
-get it back in front of you. We won't, we, we won't send any letters until you go and consider it.
Okay with everybody? Makes sense?
Yep.
Good suggestion. Any other information was the DOT pesticides and herbicides. Okay, so at this time, we've done our action items and information, so the only thing that's left, and I see Leo Peliquin here, we can go into executive session to talk about addressing the past minutes and also the non-union personnel negotiations. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiation of non-union personnel review of the executive session management to come back to solely adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, road called. Linda?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
I don't know why I keep doing that. Lorraine?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chairman says yes. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much.